This is NHTV 2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of the town of North Haven.
All righty, good evening everyone. My name is Stacy Yarber and I'm the North Haven Town Clerk. This time, I will convene our annual town meeting pursuant to the North Haven Town Charter, Chapter 9. The North Haven Annual Town Meeting will now come to order. First, a friendly reminder, as always, for everyone to be nice and kind to each other and keep things cool here. Before we proceed any further, with the town meeting, we have to elect a meeting moderator. The meeting moderator is nominated and elected by the members of the town meeting, which is all of you. It is the moderator's function to bring before the meeting all items of the warning and to assist in obtaining the objective of our meeting, excuse me, and also to ensure the rights of individual voters who wish to be heard. The moderator's duties also include helping any member of our town meeting who seeks clarification and/or to advise with regard to parliamentary procedure. Further, when it's time to vote on this issue before us, the moderator, and all issues tonight, one must be an elector of the town. To be considered an elector of the town, one must have been a registered voter in town at the time of the most recent election or one who pays taxes to the town on an assessment of property, if not less than $1,000 on the most recent grant list assessment date, as well as a citizen of the United States and 18 years of age or older. This regulation will be enforced for all votes taken this evening. If you are unsure, if you are an elector for the town, you can check with me and I have my book up front that has everyone's names who are allowed to vote with me, so you could check with me. Therefore, the floor is now open for nominations for meeting moderator. Are there any nominations? Is there a second? Any other nominations from the floor? Hearing none, I will now put this issue to a vote. All in favor of Lynn Frederickson as the annual town meeting moderator, please signify by saying aye. All opposed by saying nay. I now declare Lynn Frederickson as the moderator of this meeting.
Welcome. My name is Lynn Frederickson. It's nice to be here and I'm looking forward to hearing what you all have to say. And the town clerk will now read the call and agenda of tonight's annual town meeting.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Please be advised the following legal notice called "The Warning of Meeting" was published pursuant to Connecticut State Statute. The annual town meeting of the electors and citizens qualified to vote in town meetings of the town of North Haven, Connecticut, will be held in the auditorium of the North Haven High School, 221 Elm Street in North Haven, Connecticut, on Monday, September 23, 2024, at 7:00 PM for the following purpose: A. To consider and act upon a resolution in accordance with the recommendation of the Board of Finance concerning the adjustment of appropriations of certain line items among the various departments in fiscal year 2023-2024, the budget transferring amount of over $20,000 and the total sum of $1,523,523.09. B. To consider and act upon the recommendation of the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen to appropriate an additional $3 million for an aggregate of $15 million for costs related to the previously approved Sackett Point Road Bridge Replacement Project, called "The Project", and authorize the issue of an additional $3 million for an aggregate of $15 million, bonds or notes, and temporary notes to finance the appropriation. The amount of bonds or notes authorized to be reduced by the amount of grants received for the project and not separately appropriated to pay additional costs of the project. C. To consider and act upon whether to adopt amendments to the taxation ordinance at Chapter 184 of the ordinances of the town of North Haven to add Article 12, Retention of Excess Payments, 184-48. Authority of Tax Collector to retain certain excess payments authorizing the tax collector to retain payments in excess of the amounts due, provided that the amount of the excess payment is less than $5. Your proposed amendments are on file and available for inspection in the office of the town clerk. Proposed resolutions are also on file and available for inspection in the office of the town clerk, dated at North Haven, Connecticut, this fifth day of September 24. Board of Selectmen, Michael J. Frida, William J. Piper, and Sally J. Buamey.
The town clerk will now read Agenda Item A of the annual town meeting agenda.
Letter A. To consider and act upon a resolution in accordance with the recommendations of the Board of Finance concerning the adjustment of appropriations of certain line items among the various departments in the fiscal year 2023-2024 budget, transferring amount over $20,000 and the sum of $1,523,523.09. Be it resolved that in accordance with the recommendation of the Board of Finance, adjustment appropriations of certain line items among the various departments in the fiscal year 2023-2024 budget, transferring amounts of over $20,000 and the total sum of $1,523,523.09.
Is there a second for the resolution? You have heard the pending resolution. Now we come to the point of the meeting when we open the floor for discussion for pending resolution of the Agenda Item A. The rules for discussion are, for any ensuing discussion, anyone who wishes to speak will get a chance to comment before anyone can be called a second time. You must come forward to the microphone, state your name and address before you begin to speak. Discussion will be limited to this item only at this time. We ask that you limit your questions and discussion to no longer than five minutes per turn. Remember, after everyone has had a chance to speak at least once, you may have another turn. Would anyone care to offer discussion for this Agenda Item at this time? Hearing none. Mr. Frida.
Good evening, everyone. Sorry for, we're distracted over there on a couple of other issues we were talking about. So tonight's town meeting is the annual town meeting in September and the purpose of tonight's town meeting on this item is to talk about budget transfers over $20,000. This is by charter, we have to do that. Now, I want to make everyone aware of something I've said every year here for the past 15 years. These slides should not suggest that the town exceeded its annual budget. That is far from the case. But in a budget that has roughly 500 line items, it's impossible to have every line item exactly what's budgeted for. When we look at this past year's fiscal year budget, the difference between the expenses and the revenue was on the plus side of approximately $227,000, somewhere in that vicinity. So we ended up the year with a modest surplus. So these are transfers, 20,000 among the various departments. The total sum, ladies and gentlemen, the lines you're going to see might be a little confusing, but the total sum that went before the Board of Finance is $1,523,523.09. That's the sum total of roughly 12 of approximately 500 line items that were over budget. So when we see $1,523, that means that that was made up in other areas. Increased revenue, as an example, interest income, and a coming in lesser per line item on many of the town expenses. So the transfers tonight are $1,523,523.09. By charter, we need the public approval to approve that. But again, I want to reiterate, we ended up the year with a modest surplus. These are some of the line items. When we look at things like fire contractual replacement staff, the fire department had some workman's comp people out, so we had to pay overtime and that was roughly $115,000, or $115,213. We had an annual special audit that went $42,917 over. The deceiving part about this, where you may be confused to see the $245.75, well, that is one of the items in this category. I think it's Special Code 215. So although we're showing 245, that's just an example of the aggregate of those lines and the bottom line of $1,523 still is the bottom line. But I want to share with you where we had some issues that we never foresaw, some of the incremental expenses that you see on this slide. And a good example of that is medical insurance for our employees. That line item was $981,277 over. Sadly, and unfortunately, we have had a lot of illnesses with the town. Some very serious illnesses that required life and death treatment. So we could have never forecasted that. And that was an example there. Medicare Part B, there's a lot happening with the federal government on Medicare and Medicare Part B, so we were $56,555 over. Water protection or fire protection utilizing water, that line was $65,000 over. So we're asking for the approval tonight. This is just a standard thing every year for approval of these 12 or so items that went over budget. And once again, I want to reiterate, 12 items out of almost 500 in our annual budget is pretty good financial management, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frida. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Yes.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. My name is Nancy Barrett and I live at 1 Cresview Drive. I'm also a member of the Board of Finance, but I'm here tonight just as a member of the community, just like you all. I completely agree with the points that Mr. Frida made in terms of some of the unusual expenditures that we saw this year. But I'd just like to point out a few more data points, just so that you all understand. The transfers that we're talking about today, that we all need to vote on, are just those transfers for the town side of the budget. The Board of Education has its own ability to make transfers each and every month, as opposed to just at the end of the year. And they're also able to transfer in and out of their special funds, which are extra budgetary. But on the town side of the budget, we ended the year with approximately, I believe the count, and it was confirmed by Ingrid from the Office of Finance, is 14 departments were actually over budget, and that's out of a total of 47 departments. So that's 30% were over budget. The 12 line items that Mr. Frida mentioned that were over expended and required transfers are actually only those that required transfers in excess of $20,000 from other departments. But in fact, 118 line items out of a total of... What happened here? Here we go. Is this still working? Okay, so 118 line items out of 450 were actually over expended. So that is a percentage of about 26% were actually over expended. So in terms of how did we do, about 74% of the town expenditures were at or below the budgeted amount. The town as a whole was under expended by about $475,000. We also had a revenue shortfall of about $190,000. So as Mr. Frida mentioned, that resulted in a net surplus of about $284,000. So I just wanted to share those additional details. For bigger context, as he mentioned, we by charter need to vote on these particular types of transfers, but that gives you the bigger picture. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Would anyone else care to speak? Yes?
Good evening. My name is Fred Lowenbaum, 76 Vista Road, North Haven. I'm new to this meeting procedure and I just would like to ask a question. The $1,500,000, is that coming out of monies already in our coffers? Or are we going to be taxed for that at a later date?
Mr. Frida?
No, there'll be no tax on that. As I tried to explain earlier, we ended up with a surplus of $200,000-plus thousand. So these are the lines that went over that total, $1,523,000. There's no tax on that, sir.
Okay, thank you. And this is also going to take precedent for, I think, for my questioning for the next item or the second or third one, the bridge. So am I jumping ahead if I ask a question about that?
Yeah, I'll tell you what, I'm going to come back on that and explain that. So once we get to that, which I think is next, I'll come back up. And then we'll have you back up with any questions you may have, okay?
Would anyone else care to speak to this matter? All right, all in favor of calling the question for this Agenda Item A, please signify by saying aye. All opposed by saying nay. The motion passes. And for voting, all in favor of the pending resolution, please signify by saying aye. All opposed by saying nay. And the resolution passes. The town clerk will now read Agenda Item B of the annual town meeting agenda.
Thank you very much. B. To consider and act upon the recommendation of the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen to appropriate an additional $3 million for an aggregate of $15 million for costs related to the previously approved Sackett Point Road Bridge Replacement Project, "The Project", and authorize the issue of an additional $3 million for an aggregate of $15 million, bonds or notes, and temporary notes to finance the appropriation. The amount of bonds or notes authorized to be reduced by the amount of grants received for the project and not separately appropriated to pay additional costs of the project. Whereas, the town has approved a resolution appropriating $12 million for the design and construction of the Sackett Point Road Bridge Replacement Project and authorizing the issuance of $12 million, $12 million bonds of the town to meet said appropriation at a special town meeting held on September 21, 2005, which was called "The Original Resolution". And whereas, the town has approved a resolution amending "The Original Resolution" to make technical corrections at a special town meeting held on January 29, 2013, which was called "The Amending Resolution", and whereas during the construction phase of the project, the town has determined it will need an additional $3 million for costs of the project as a result of effects from the current inflationary environment, supply chain shortages, and other economic factors. And whereas, in order to account for the additional costs of the project, "The Original Resolution", as amended by "The Amending Resolution", will need to be further amended to increase the appropriation and borrowing authorization. Now therefore be it resolved, A. The appropriation of $12 million for the design and construction of the Sackett Point Road Bridge Replacement Project is amended by increasing it by $3 million for an aggregate appropriation of $15 million. B. The authorization for the issuance of bonds, notes, and temporary notes of the town is amended by increasing it by $3 million for an aggregate borrowing authorization of $15 million. The amount of such bonds, notes, and temporary notes shall be reduced by the amounts of grants and other funds received by the town for the project and not separately appropriated to pay additional costs of the project. C. All other provisions of "The Prior Resolution", except as amended by A and B above, shall remain in full force and effect as of the date of the adoption of this resolution.
Is there a second for this resolution? Seconded. You have heard the pending resolution. Now we come to the point of the meeting when we open the floor for discussion for pending resolution of the Agenda Item B. Rules of discussion are exactly as they were previously for the previous item. Would anyone care to offer discussion for this Agenda Item at this time? Mr. Frida.
So to sum this up, if you were listening carefully to how Stacy read the resolution, this was targeted to be many years ago, a $12 million project. 90% of the $12 million was to be funded by the state and federal government. 10% has been the town's responsibility. So on a $12 million project, the town was responsible for $1.2 million. Now, because we were the gatekeepers of the project, we had our staff, our engineers down through the years involved with this. Even though the bond resolution was many years ago, we really didn't start this project till roughly about five years ago. We had the top deck rated a 2 on that Sackett Point Road Bridge and the subdeck was rated an 8. So I quickly, back then, had to make a determination, consulting with the engineers. I thought we needed to put a weight limit on that bridge until we started this project. But because the subdeck was an 8, rated an 8 out of 10, we didn't need to have weight limitations. But we knew we had to start the bridge soon. Over the course of the past three to four years, there have been delays. There was a fish migration issue that the Department of Energy Environmental Protection caused a delay for several months. There was a crushed sewer pipe that was discovered underneath the bridge that if we didn't become cognizant of, we could have had sewer backups in 25% of the town. So there were delays and then COVID hit. And then there was a tremendous inflationary aspect on the cost of the bridge from that point forward. So we end up, after all these years, $3 million over the original $12 million. And that is what we're looking to bond for. However, the 90% still is in effect, which means that 2.7 million of that will be paid by the state and the federal government. The town's responsibility is the $300,000. But because we're the caretakers and gatekeepers, we have to borrow the money first and then get reimbursed, the 2.7 million. So our net exposure from the start, going back to 2005, 2008, in that period when there were a lot of meetings in the town under previous administrations, our exposure is the $300,000, not the $3 million. And this completes the project from a financial standpoint. It has improved the infrastructure there. It has perpetuated the safety of our residents and visitors to the town and trucks traversing over that bridge. So let me just summarize again. Although it appears to be the $3 million, for the town, it's really $300,000. 2.7 will be reimbursed by the federal government and the state. Sir, did you have a question?
Fred Lowenbaum, 76 Vista Road. In 2008, did the town receive bonding for $12 million?
The town created a bond resolution for $12 million.
So we did not receive that money?
No.
Okay, so my question would have been, at $12 million over this course of time, we would have had quite a bit of interest accrued, but that wasn't the case?
We, basically, we tap into it when we start using it. So, but there has been debt service accumulated in the debt service side of the budget regarding what we would take over the course of stages on that. But that's already baked into the budget every year, the debt service line.
Okay, so when did we actually start the bridge?
Somewhere four to five years ago, we actually started it with the planning. We had to go out to bid for an engineer, because the town doesn't do it themselves. There's a lot of expertise out there that does these bridges. So we had to hire engineers and then a general contractor, and that was all out to bid.
And when tax season arrives again, will the town tax the residents for the $300,000?
You know, it's hard to say, because by the time the next tax season comes around, we may have already paid the $300,000 out of existing funds or incremental revenue. But even if that's the case at $300,000, it's amortized over 17 years, so the debt service increment is negligible at that point. It will not have a significant or any type of impact on the residents. The things that have, because you're relatively new, I think, to these meetings, the things that have the big impact to residents on a tax, from a tax standpoint, are the Board of Education and all of the larger departments, Public Safety, Police and Fire. Not a $300,000 bond obligation for the town.
And I know the town of North Haven has been fiscally responsible for many, many, many years. I was a teacher in Hamden and I used to always hear the teachers of North Haven complaining that they weren't getting their raises. But in any event, I know the North Haven is well aware of the sacrifices people are making today with insurances, inflation, and I'm hoping that they're going to do their best to always keep that in mind during budget season.
Yeah, and I think that you've got great perspective, Frederick, because you, did you live in Hamden also?
I did.
If you did. So right now, there's a 20 mil rate difference between Hamden and North Haven. So we provide a lot of services and they're costly services. Like this fall, now leaf pickup, that's a tremendous cost. People love that service. We're the only town that does it and pick up loose leaves at Curbside. Most towns require the residents to bag the leaves and buy the bags. We don't. So, but I understand your point, sir, and it's duly noted. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this issue? Sally?
Yes, good evening. Sally Buamey, 5 Blossom Drive. I'm a member of the Board of Selectmen and I joined with my two colleagues on the board. We unanimously recommended this resolution to the town meeting, and so I do support it. I think the new bridge looks great, obviously. Sackett Point is one of our heavily traveled roads and we needed a new bridge and I think it looks great. And I support the resolution. I always wondered, and perhaps some of our listeners have wondered, since we originally bonded, or excuse me, we originally authorized bonding in 2008 for the $12 million for this bridge. bonding in 2008 for the 12 million for this bridge, the condition of the bridge must have been pretty bad at that time. I was just wondering why there was such a delay in its starting. I don't know. For example, the Valley Service Road, I know, delayed in that the extension of the Valley Service Road to the road behind Amazon, I believe there was a 700-foot extension with a lot of fill, and the Army Corps of Engineers was a reason for that delay. I don't know whether there was other delays with funding from the federal government. I know that the 2008 was prior to you taking office, but given the fact that the bridge must have been in bad shape then in order to authorize it, do you have any explanation for the 13-year delay in the start of the project, even though it didn't cost us money? We went 13 more years with a bad bridge.
Thank you, Sally. Yes, I've asked you several explanations. Because of, we'll start with what I mentioned about the subdeck being an eight. The bridge was deemed safe, but we knew that over the course of time, we'd have to act on it like we did. But during that time, ladies and gentlemen, we were building a new middle school for $69 million. We had the police department, which was $18. During that time, four new firehouses were being built. So there was a lot of bonding going on back then. So we pushed this back because the bridge was safe. Back then, my thought was, let's get all these other projects behind us, one by one, before we start the bridge. And that's what happened. The middle school was completed, the police department was completed, and prior to that, the four new firehouses were completed. So those are the explanations.
Okay, thank you. Thank you both. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this matter? Did I see a hand? No, maybe not. Okay. All in favor of the pending resolution, please signify by saying aye. All opposed by saying nay. And the resolution passes. The town clerk will now read Agenda Item C of the annual town meeting agenda.
Thank you. C, to consider and act upon whether to adopt amendments to the taxation ordinance at Chapter 184 of the ordinances of the Town of North Haven to add Article 12 Retention of Excess Payments, 184-48, authority of tax collector to retain certain excess payments, authorizing the tax collector to retain payments in excess of the amount due, provided that the amount of the excess payment is less than $5. The proposed amendments are on file and available for inspection in the office of the town clerk. Be it resolved amendments to the taxation ordinances of Chapter 184 of the ordinances of the Town of North Haven to add Article 12 Retention of Excess Payments, Section 184-48, authority of tax collector to retain certain excess payments, authorizing the tax collector to retain payments in excess of the amount due, provided that the amount of the excess payment is less than $5. Article 11, Section 184-48 of the taxation ordinance shall be published in a newspaper having circulation in the Town of North Haven and shall be effective 15 days after publication.
Is there a second for the resolution? You have heard the pending resolution. Now we come to the point of the meeting when we open the floor for discussion for pending resolution of the Agenda Item C. The rules for discussion are the same as the previous two items. And would anyone care to offer any discussion for this? Anyone? Okay. All in favor of the pending resolution, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed by saying nay. All right, the motion passes. And as there exists, no further business to be considered tonight. I hereby declare this annual town meeting adjourned. The minutes of this meeting will be made available to the public by the town clerk as soon as possible. Thank you, and good night.